All right, now that we are recording, I will call this meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to order. Ceremonial gaveling, and we will start as always with the Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if the clerk will call the roll.
Supervisor Pat Breslin.
Here.
Supervisor Headland.
Here.
Supervisor Score.
Here.
Supervisor Steen.
Here.
Supervisor Zahnz.
Present.
Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Yeah.
Supervisor Wilsie. Supervisor Quinn.
Here.
Supervisor Jersemo.
Supervisor Whitzel.
Supervisor Kinnear.
Supervisor Berryer. Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Lyon. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Sean Breslin. Supervisor Vander Mullen. Supervisor Robinson.
Here.
Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Gilbert. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Lino. Supervisor Hartung. Chair McCullough.
Here, and allow me to note for the record that Supervisor Johnson had to take his wife to the emergency room tonight, so he will not be with us. Hopefully, everything will be all right. All right, approval of the minutes. Motion by Supervisor Steen. Second by Supervisor Whitzel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications. We have a thank you to the county staff as it's Thanksgiving season that we're going to try and get all of the supervisors to sign and scan in and send out. So, the clerk will start that rolling around. That is the main one. I will also note, I'm going to take a brief moment to say a word about Supervisor Keeter, who is no longer with us. I wanted to memorialize Supervisor Keeter. Many of the things that I said about Supervisor Rogers are also true for Supervisor Keeter. I hadn't expected to be in a position to be moralizing a second member of the board at all, much less so soon. Don was a fierce advocate for recycling and for other sustainable causes, so I think you would forgive me for recycling some of what I had to say the last time around. He was a good man, a good supervisor, and a good politician who cared deeply about the people of the county. We are diminished by his loss, and I will miss his strength, his optimism, and his tireless advocacy for the causes he cared about. Most of all, I will miss Don. I believe we'll be saying a little bit more about him at a later meeting, but his memorial service will be Friday, December 8th, and the clerk will make sure to send you the information all about. Okay. Do we have anything else for petitions and memorials? We do not. Onto the public hearing of the proposed FY 2023 budget and property tax levy. Opening the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public who's going to speak on that? Not seeing anyone, not seeing anyone online? I believe that means that we can close the public hearing portion. Okay, on to public comment. Anyone here with public comment on anything else? Going once? All right, closing public comment. Appointments. You all have an appointment sheet in front of you, I believe? I don't have one in front of me, so... Just let me... There we go. Just wanted to make sure that there were a couple that needed confirmation. So, I would need a motion to confirm those that need confirmation. Supervisor Steen and Supervisor Lino seconds. Any comment on the appointments? I will note for the record with the committee's assignments that Supervisor Lino very graciously volunteered to swap committee assignments with Supervisor Larry Bjork. So Larry Bjork will be moving to facilities where he will be vice chair, and Supervisor Lino will be moving to the neighbors where he will also be vice chair, thus saving me a number of headaches and hopefully making them both very happy. Thank you Supervisor Lino, thank you Supervisor Bjork. All right. All in favor of the appointments that need a vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, appointments are done. Report of the county manager. Chris, over to you.
Good evening.
There we go.
There we go. So, there are no... We're at the end of the year, so there are no purchase orders over $40,000 this month. And I am going to quickly turn my time over to Jenna Nutter, our human resources director, who is going to walk you through one of the handouts that were at your seats this evening.
Good evening. So, by request of one of the members of the executive committee, we were asked to pull together data dating back 10 years to show the number of, total number of FTE that has changed at the county in the last decade. FTE meaning full-time equivalent. So, that's basically all of the positions of the county, the number of hours that they're funded for divided by 2,080 per year to kind of get that equivalent of full-time. Of course, we have a mixture of some full-time positions and some part-time. So, I'm going to start by going through the data broken down by department. So, if you want to page to the graph that is probably really tiny to read, I'm actually going to start at the bottom of the departments with administration. And just know that the top color, that dark blue color, is the current FTE. And then the bottom to light blue is dating back to 2013. Okay, so I will start with administration. In the last 10 years, it has increased by 20 FTE. And we also tried to make note of any significant changes that took place that would justify any sort of big change over time. And most notably for administration, in 2016, 13.8 FTE were transferred to administration, to the finance division, as the county board had approved to centralize those finance functions. So, they were positions that transferred from other departments to the finance division. Sure, yeah. So, county manager has asked me to kind of elaborate more on the HR division specifically. So, historically, there were two FTE in the HR division, and that was the HR manager in an administrative secretary role. And then additionally, we had a risk management and benefits position that was actually in a different department at that time, but essentially three FTE that were dedicated to HR functions. Over time, those have increased to five total. Six if you include the payroll position, but that was previously in the finance division. Any questions on administration? Okay, so child support. There has been a slight decrease in the last 10 years by .77 FTE. In the courts, which includes the clerk of court's office and the judicial staff, there has been an increase by .9, so nearly 1 FTE in the last 10 years. In the corporation counsel office, there's been an increase by 1 FTE. The county clerk's office has increased by a half of FTE, so .5 in the last 10 years. The district attorney's office has increased by 4.05 in the last decade. And I know that our DA is here, but I would note that would be primarily due to victim witness staff increasing over the last decade, which is a grant-funded program. The emergency management and communication department has increased by .84 in the last 10 years. The environmental services department has actually decreased by 1.73 in the last 10 years. And it should be noted, in 2020, the solid waste and recycling division was eliminated. The facilities department has decreased by 2.7. The health department has decreased by 1.76 in the last 10 years. The highway department has decreased by 3.89. In human services, there's an overall increase in the last 10 years of 21.04. It should be noted that in 2022, there was a large group of previously leased employees that were hired on as county positions. So, these were positions that were contracted out for services primarily relating to the comprehensive community services program, CCS. Did I get that acronym right, Paula? And that's a primarily grant-funded program. In 2022, or actually, starting in 2021, there was a review of that employment relationship with regard to those leased employees. And with evolvement of federal regulations pertaining to those employment relationships, it was recommended legally to hire those employees as county employees. So, that did take place in 2022, and again, that was a total of 36.66 FTE. We could also note that in 2019, the home care division, which was within the human services department, was eliminated. The medical examiner's office has seen an increase of 7.65 in the last decade. And most notably there, there was a relationship started with Eau Claire County in 2018 that provided that Dunn County would cover Eau Claire County for medical examiner needs. So, there was an addition of FTE initially in 2018 and after review in the last few years with the deputy medical examiner positions. Any questions on medical examiner or any of the above? All right. The register of deeds office has not changed in 10 years. The sheriff's office has increased by 1.97 in 10 years. The transit department has increased by a total of 6.89. And it should be noted with transit that up until 2023, the driving positions were previously contracted out with pie management. And again, similar to that human services group, it was recommended that we hire those positions as county positions.
And I'll note that those are also enterprise fund, grant-funded positions that the county is not directly responsible for.
Okay, and the treasurer's office has increased by .25 over time in the last 10 years. The veterans office has increased by .4, and that was a very recent increase as of 2023. And that summarizes by department. Do I have any questions that I can answer from the group before we speak to overall?
Supervisor Lino.
Yeah, Chair Lino, I've noticed some of these decreases over time. Are they because the inability to hire enough folks?
I can't speak to that specifically. I do know for a stretch of time, and again, 10 years does predate me at the county, but I do know there was a stretch of time, an active effort to try and reduce staff where possible. And it could have been that positions that had been vacant for a period of time were reviewed first in that process. But I would, I can, for the treasurer's office, look at that more specifically and report back if you'd like.
That would be fine.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, I believe that's the case for a number of those positions. The executive committee looked at positions that had not been filled for anywhere from a couple of years to a decade and felt that we should take them off the books.
And I don't want to make this a blanket statement, but it can be common with part-time positions specifically. Those can be more difficult to fill because if they are below a certain FTE, they don't receive the health insurance benefits that the county helps pay for. So, it can be difficult to fill those part-time positions.
And I have questions from two more. Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, how many of the additional FTEs are grant-funded? So, it's not coming from the county dollars or whatever? If that's a proper question to ask?
Yeah, we're going to get to the sort of the total, total position comparison.
Okay, thank you.
And Supervisor Larry Bjork.
To do with finance also. You know, we looked at what FTEs are here. If we had how costs have changed in each department, would the graph be somewhat similar as far as how the cost per department per year changes?
I don't think we have that data handy.
I might not be the best one to answer that.
We can certainly look into it.
But we certainly can pull that information.
Well, you know, it's, you know, tonight's the night when we make decisions. It's, tomorrow doesn't do much good. But I, just broad statement, wouldn't the more FTEs as they change represent the change in the cost per department per year?
So, I can address that a little bit. I think that it is certainly the case for some departments. For example, health and human services, where the vast majority of the costs are staff, that'll probably track pretty closely. But for example, highway, where a big chunk of the costs are equipment, salt, pavement, the track will be very, very different.
Right, but every year we have winter, and every year we fix road... I mean, I'm not arguing...
Well, sure, but pavement is up about 40%.
Yeah, okay. Well, okay. I'm not here to pick at what things cost. It's just that it'd be nice to know what things cost. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so I will move on to the next graph, which just provides an overall total FTE change in the last 10 years. I will note that this data does not include the neighbors' employees, and those are tracked a little bit differently. And Carmen will be providing her report here shortly. So, overall, a total of 43.55 FTE has been added in the last 10 years. Now, remember, 36.66 of that number was that larger group of employees that were hired in human services that were previously contracted positions. So, those were positions that were still being funded in some fashion, just weren't county FTE until 2022. This is also true of a smaller group of the transit employees, which was the, just reference my number here, 6.89 FTE. So, if we don't include those two groups, a total of 11.45 FTE has been added in the last 10 years here at the county. I know this doesn't answer Supervisor Bjork's question, but I thought it was interesting. So, over time, an addition of 11.45 FTE equates to 3.5% in 10 years. And the question came up, how does that align with the increase in population over time? And of course, we have a little bit different of a sample period just because of when the census is conducted. But between 2010 and 2020, there was actually a 3.6% increase in population. So, it's interesting how that is somewhat aligned in that way. As far as the funding questions go, I can certainly go back to my workspace and try and pull at least personnel costs from 10 years ago until now, if that would be helpful.
Notes that I had taken at one other time from you was that the Dunn County government growth... Or no, the Dunn County growth, and I assume that'd be the population, was 3.75?
So, as far as the census data from 2010 to 2020, that was 3.6 was the number that was pulled from the census website.
And then Dunn County had an increase during that same period of time of 2.6?
Between 2013 and 2023, so not exactly the same. But in a 10-year period, there was a 3.5% increase in FTE overall.
Wait a minute. Did you, are you talking about the county, the growth of the county versus the growth of Dunn County?
The growth in the population of Dunn County compared to the growth of FTE of Dunn County employees in a 10-year timeframe.
So, growth...
You're saying virtually the same? Okay, because I had written down differently, okay.
Yeah, essentially identical growth in staff versus growth in population.
That was my question.
Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These contracted employees that were made full-time, was that due to trying to keep more employees employed? Or is it due for like a financial savings?
So, there was a, so of course, federal and state regulations are always evolving, as we know. And there was a legal review done with regard to that relationship. And with the evolving regulations, it was recommended at that time to hire those positions as county employees in order to stay in compliance.
Essentially, the federal government strongly suggested that we were treating them as full-time employees. They should be full-time employees. Yeah.
Welcome.
Supervisor Steen.
Yeah, I think this is relevant. I think that for the older members of the county board, they might remember that part of the reason that we farmed out the people from human services was in an effort to save money. And when we got the contracted services, and we also farmed out some janitorial staff. To remain in compliance with the law, we had to bring them back. And also, in answer to Supervisor Lino's question, over the last 10 years, I think it would reflect the county's effort to become more efficient as we reduce the headcount in the county and consolidate jobs. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I would believe, I believe it's a fair statement. I would also note that particularly with transit bringing those jobs in-house, which was partially, which again, was strongly recommended to us, I think has also helped us to retain employees. And I think it's actually brought down costs because with the pie management, as a former chair of the transit committee, with the pie management, they had a really high turnover, and our training costs were quite, quite high. So, I think despite the somewhat increased cost and benefits, I think it's probably saved us a little bit money overall. And since that is an enterprise-funded unit, they can give a pretty good, you know, cost estimate, and they've been able to bring those jobs in-house and still run in the black consistently.
Supervisor Kinnear.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I see this 11 employees in 10 years, and I think about all the different state mandates that we've had in that, it really surprises me that it didn't go up more because of Marcy's Law or other different kinds of things that require us to do more. And it surprised me that we didn't have more. That's, that's a small number, and you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Kinnear. Anyone else? Supervisor Hagan.
Yeah, on that note, what's going through my mind is the amount of like workload that the county employees have over the past 10 years. We see, you know, we've hired an equivalent of 11.45 people. Does that mean extra bodies? Or are the people that are currently working taking on more responsibilities?
Yeah, so it is important, I think, for you to, thank you for bringing that up, because this FTE is, I'm reporting what was funded. And that's not reflective of what positions were actually filled at any given time. So, you know, as far as productivity and as far as workload, we know, you know, by way of previous reports of turnover that it's actually a decrease in the number of people actually filling those roles and getting the work done. So, thank you for mentioning that. And I hope that is along the lines of your statement.
Well, and I'll add that in addition to fewer people for that workload, the workload has gone up with a number of state mandates.
And I know I don't want to speak out of turn either, but with, as far as the services and human services, we know that there is more of a need, which is consistent with the requests from the human services department as well as far as services being utilized. So, the population growth doesn't always reflect evenly upon that. I just thought it was an interesting thing to note.
Anyone else? All right, Jenna, are you done then? Or do you have a little bit more to finish up? Oh, thank you very much. Very educational.
Thank you.
And Chris is done, then we are on to reports of departments, starting with highway. Come on up.
Well, good evening, everyone. So, I did not provide this in your packet that came from Chris. So, on your tables, everybody should have that in front of you. Just, Chris kind of wanted to mention why I'm presenting two reports. Obviously, I did one in, I believe it was in June. Did an operational report, and then obviously, this is more geared for a financial report. Statutorily, we have to present this at the November board meeting. So, that is the reason for it. I'll just go over just kind of a brief summary of my report. In 2022, the highway financial report, we had a positive budget of approximately $1.6 million, which is always a good thing. Obviously, I mentioned before, to buy equipment nowadays is a plow truck. It's about $300,000 for one plow truck. And when the highway department has approximately 40 plow trucks, a lifespan of approximately 10, 10 years, we need to generate about $1.2 million just to buy four plow trucks every year. So, that just takes that into consideration. We did one, or 8.17 miles of county construction, which accounts for about a 52-year lifespan of a roadway in Dunn County. As you can see, I did provide just our operating revenues and expenses, which shows our positive budget in 2022. On the second page, it just kind of highlights a number of our maintenance expenses for 2022. As you can see, $2.3 million worth of surface maintenance and approximately $3.3 million of construction projects. So, that, construction is basically, we either pulverize the existing road, widen the shoulders, add more base, and repave the road for a complete reconstruct. As noted, in 2022, our vehicle registration fee was approximately $787,000, which was put towards... which was put towards our county maintenance for crack filling, seal coating, surface repairs, et cetera. So that's basically the nuts and bolts of 2022. Do you have any questions before I go on to this year's budget? Perfect, summed it up great. In 2023, I provided a, our financial report. Every month, Beata and I and Sarah, we go over these reports with a fine-tooth comb. So as you can see on the very right-hand side of that first, on that document there and that graph, it shows approximately $3.2 million is what we're projecting for a positive budget in 2023. That does not include depreciation in, of our equipment and also some expenditures and carryforwards that we're looking at doing for our county construction of B as well as some of our machinery that has been delayed. We have ordered four plow trucks dating back to 2022, April of 2022. And we're literally not going to see those trucks until probably April of '24. So it's about a two-year process to get a plow truck. So, and the costs keep getting higher and higher. The next set of pages is just our expenditures and revenues. I'm not going to get into too much detail there. It's a lot of numbers. So if there's any questions with that, we can go in further detail. But the 2023 overall highway budget was 17 million, approximately. We saw a 6% to 10% increase in operating expenses based on the growing trends. We're expecting that to, to carry forward into 2024 and beyond unless we can predict the future. But I just wanted to kind of break down a little bit of the, the operating expenses comparisons. So that's that one table that, that I show, I believe on the last page. As you can see, just in the last three years, approximately 20% to 40% increase in a lot of the materials that we use. Asphalt prices have skyrocketed, salt prices, lime rock prices, equipment prices. Everything has greatly increased. Just the cost of a simple asphalt overlay, as you can see, resurfacing cost per mile just here in 2023 is about, about 140,000 a mile, which has increased probably about 10% just in the last year. So that explains kind of 2023 and what we're looking for in obviously 2024 is, is another budget increase to Highway. We're requesting approximately $20 million, about $3 million more than this year. We have a pretty large, significant project on County Road B that's happening. We did get, the north portion of the County Road B was let. So bid proposals did come in and we did see good numbers. We had three contractors bid on that project. And we did see a cost savings based on the estimated cost of the project. That's not to say it won't change when the project starts, but it's better to have better numbers than not enough money to cover the costs. So like I said, we're, we're looking into the future and trying to improve the road structures to try to bring that 52-year lifespan down. The average life cycle of a roadway is approximately 20 to 25 years. So we're more than double. Any questions?
Supervisor Lino.
Yeah, just one quick question. In the past, we've had trouble securing salt for the season. How's that looking this year?
We have not had a problem recently.
Okay.
I can't speak on behalf of the DOT, so we have two, two different quantities of salt. Salt portion is owned by the state and then there's the county portion. We have had all of our county salt delivered. The state salt is continually coming in every day yet. All right, thank you.
Supervisor Bauer.
Just a statement a little bit here, even the townships are having trouble with the heavier equipment, with farm equipment and stuff like that. Do you see the roads costing more by building them heavier and wider as that cost is going to go?
Yep, anytime you're gonna have to build the road structurally to support the, the larger equipment, thickens the asphalt, you're widening the shoulders for these large combines. It, it does increase the cost significantly.
Supervisor Calabrese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dustin, for the report. We hear a lot and talk a lot about the finances and the roads and the potholes and everything. But for those who don't know, could you talk a little bit about your coordination with the police and the emergency services and how you do the signage and just how often you're in touch and what that relationship is like?
Yeah, so obviously, we, we have a good working relationship with the Sheriff's Department, State Patrol, City of the nominee as well. We ask for their support a lot of times if we're doing traffic control setups. They obviously let us know the situation if we have a fall, a tree falls down in the roadway. So there's a lot of communication with emergency management and Sheriff's Department, so. And if there's a snowflake in the air, they call us. State Patrol is better though. They like that interstate.
That appears to be it for questions for the moment.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. District Attorney Nodolf. You are on deck.
Hey, good evening. Thank you for having me. I didn't realize how busy 2022 was until I sat down to write this. But it was, I put this, how do I get it to go? This snapshot in my written report, but just wanted to, you know, put it up here. It was pretty consistent with our last few years, up on some cases, case levels. Certainly misdemeanors were down during COVID as law enforcement wasn't doing as many traffic stops, but up in other areas. So generally pretty consistent, but it was busy within the court system. Over the last five, 10 years with the increase in technology, so has the way that I see cases being prosecuted. And so I wanted to go through some details, at least take you through one case that took a lot of time in 2022. And that was this homicide occurred, three defendants were all charged as party to a crime with first degree intentional homicide. Two went to jury trial, Ryan Steinhoff and Chad Turgason and Ashley Gunder took a plea deal. This was a particularly difficult crime scene. The homicide occurred at a flap, flop house, drug house in Downsville. It was very well-known to law enforcement. A lot of our drug dealers, drug users were residing or going to this residence. This residence has now been razed by the Town of Dunn and so it has been demolished and is no longer there. But I just wanted to go through some of the difficulties law enforcement has when we have this type of crime scene. So when walking in the front door of the residence, this is what law enforcement saw. When one of our investigators, Jake Mack and Deputy Chad Musles entered, they were told that there was a dead body inside, but there's a lot of opportunity for individuals to hide in there. I was very impressed with those officers. They stayed calm, cool and collected, systematically went through the residence, checked on the welfare of our victim. And he was unfortunately already deceased, but they did a fabulous job in clearing this and staying calm. This was the residence going down. I'm not going to go through any of the bloody pictures. I'm going to spare you from that, but I just wanted you to see some of what we see, some of what social workers sees, law enforcement sees and some of the conditions that individuals are staying in, certainly surrounding methamphetamine use. So this was going down into the hallway, so also difficult and to see what's ahead and what you're walking into. This was one of the bedrooms, pretty common in my line of work to see a mattress like that without, without pillows, without sheets, without a comforter. And this was a pretty brutal homicide. The man was beaten to death with many different objects, pretty much anything they could find. And so trying to find every potential piece of evidence, any drug paraphernalia, you know, drug substance, weapon was certainly a daunting task. This was the third bedroom in the residence, also really just stuff everywhere. You can see that at the bottom, it has Wisconsin State Crime Lab. The Sheriff's Office utilized the Wisconsin Crime Scene Response Team. Very appreciative whenever that they do that, just because I think it takes the presentation on a prosecution stand to another level. And so they, they just have better equipment. They take really pretty photos. They have a team that comes down and assists our Sheriff's Office in this case with, you know, processing a crime scene like this, and this one took days. And so then they're called to testify and quite frankly, luckily, we don't see that many homicides compared to other areas. And so I just think it's always helpful and I'm appreciative that they did that. So this was, I just wanted to show you, this is kind of the evident, the interview room where this individual, Ashley Gunder, was interviewed. She was interviewed at least three times, if not more, for several hours. And so there's lots of videotape, lots of transcripts to review. And then compared to the olden days, we just wouldn't have the video surveillance that we have now. And so this was up in Amory, Wisconsin at QuickTrip. QuickTrip has great video surveillance. I'm always happy if people stop at QuickTrip because you'll see it's just wonderful. And so it was, this was a challenging case as well as, as I wrote in my report. These were all individuals who were using methamphetamine, who spent the days before without sleeping, driving around, trying to score drugs, using drugs, trying to score drugs. They were dumpster diving, looking for items that they could find to sell, to try to buy more drugs. And so this was something hard and where we could determine the time that they were at QuickTrip and the date and location and who was there. So it was an incredible amount of work for the Sheriff's Office on this case. And especially one of their investigators who was assigned, he was hearing from us pretty much every day. These are, Chad Turgason was the first case that went to trial. He was found not guilty of the homicide. In Wisconsin, you can be charged as a party to a crime even if you don't directly commit the homicide. If you ate in a bet or ready, willing to assist. If I went back to Ashley Gunder, she, you know, was the lookout person, the cleanup person involved with the homicide. She, you know, eventually took that plea deal and got 25 years initial confinement and 10 years of extended supervision. Chad Turgason took his shot at jury trial and worked out in his favor, in my opinion. But up in the, the top left corner, you can see some of the evidence that was used. We hear about DNA a lot. To be honest, doesn't encompass all that many of the cases that I take to trial. This was one that it did, but it's not as easy as it sounds on TV and it's not as straightforward as it sounds on TV. But Chad Turgason's shoe, we can see from this QuickTrip video, he was wearing the white and black, or the white and red shoe. There was just a drop of the victim's blood on the, the sort of lip of the, the front top of the shoe. And the black shoe was the co-defendant, Ryan Steinhoff's. They spend at least an hour at QuickTrip, walking around, eating food they hadn't paid for. And then, you know, I threw up here, they were staying at a hotel in the area. And we hear about methamphetamine a lot in this community and we hear about how you don't sleep. But it was one thing to process this case and go through the video surveillance and see how this guy did not sleep. I mean, he was up pretty much every hour, in the lobby, out of the lobby, in the lobby, cleaning things, going to Eau Claire. He certainly did not sleep. And so it just kind of goes to show what we see with this horrible drug in our area. The other case I wanted to show you was Ryan Steinhoff. He was also interviewed a number of times. One of the individuals in this group indicated that they were positive for COVID. So that made it difficult for the Sheriff's Office. It also made it very difficult for hearing what was said in these interviews. And so I was very grateful that I was able to purchase a sanctioned program, which allows the transcripts to be embedded into the videos as they, so you can actually hear what they're saying and then see it as well. And so I just wanted to show you that. Also, QuickTrip video is just wonderful. And then, you know, in this case, this is one of the, the pretty pictures that I appreciate from the crime lab where they can, they do their DNA section and their photography section, DNA always goes first. But this was a little bit, you know, favorable evidence for Ryan Steinhoff. Also, as I indicated in this case, it was a nine-day jury trial. He pled not guilty by mental disease or defect as well. So after the guilt phase, then it went to the second phase of the jury trial, which was doctors. And the investigator from the Sheriff's Office had to do, excuse me, a large, large amount of subpoenas. So we know that they plead not guilty by mental disease or defect. And so asked for a court order to access privileged records such as mental health records, counseling records. But they don't tell me where they are. So, and law enforcement wasn't familiar with these individuals, but at least from our area. And so it required an enormous amount of time, just picking up, looking at a map, seeing any type of mental health facility or clinic or hospital or counseling office and issuing subpoenas to see if this, he was a patient there. Also, as I said in my written report, we're seeing more and more individuals plead not guilty by mental disease or defect. The difficulty in this case was, was it methamphetamine or was it a mental disease or defect? And so he was positive for methamphetamine. And so I'm glad that the jury found that he was not NGI. And then another homicide case, this one did not go to trial. This was to Sheen Goggins, but I just wanted to talk about that as well because this was another one where video surveillance played a huge part. It was caught all on video. I think it was around Halloween in 2020. And so I hate Halloween around this area. I feel like it's got to get through Halloween because it always makes me nervous with college kids and some of the crimes that we see. But this was all on video and so he was, he eventually pled. And so he was sentenced to 13 years of initial confinement. And then our office has changed a little bit, but this was from December of 2022. And just thank you for your support. And if anyone other ever has any questions or concerns or wants to talk about a case, I miss the days when Barb Lyon and Pam Powers came to court and actually reported. Now it's just, we get a snapshot of, you know, one sentence or two from what they can get off of CCAP, it seems like. So if you ever have questions, concerns, always feel free to give me a call or stop by. Any questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Andrea. Neighbors of Dunn County, Carmen.
Hello, Carmen Meyer, the Administrator Community Mentor at The Neighbors. So in your packets is my overall report for The Neighbors. And at the end of this, I'll have a moment for questions as well, which could be on my presentation or the report. Chris had asked department heads to pick one thing that we do in our departments to give reports on. Well, it's a little bit hard for us to pick one service line as we really focus on the overall whole care of all of our residents. But one thing that we do that's kind of outside of our main service line is we are the Meals on Wheels provider for the county. So we partner with the ADRC for that program. And it is something that I've had a couple of supervisors ask me about and that they weren't aware of. So I thought that would be something good to focus on as a single item. All right, so as I said, So as I said, we partner with the ADRC. We have a memo of understanding with them, which has been in place since 2018. So prior to that, they use a separate agency that made the food for the Meals on Wheels program. And then in 2018, The Neighbors took that over. NDC provides the meals for multiple congregate sites, as well as the individual meals that are delivered to individuals' households. On average, we supply 250 days of meals a year. That's Monday through Friday, but it excludes holidays. And then if we do follow the Menominee School District for closing for inclement weather as well. So this is a chart of the number of meals by year. So it has gone up and down. So when we first started, we were about 34,000 meals, and now we're actually down to 33,000 meals. That was last year. Does go up and down every year. It seemed to have a little bit less, actually a decline during COVID, which is kind of exactly opposite of what we thought would happen as more people were at home and things like that. But also during that time, getting meals delivered to your house was much more accessible. Our area got things like Grubhub and Uber Eats and things like that, as well as there was other people home. So if a person that had family that might have been home now and weren't before, couldn't bring food, things like that. So we have actually seen a decrease in meals. And that's people having the meals, as well as we did have quite a few snow days in the last couple of years. So that does decrease quite a bit as well. On average, there's about 150 meals prepared every day. So how the menus work? So The Neighbors has a five-week menu cycle for our residents. So we follow that same menu cycle for the Meals on Wheels program as well. So every five weeks, there's a new cycle, and then that gets changed out a couple times a year. And that is derived from our registered dietitian. So The Neighbors has a registered dietitian that supports both our meal program for our residents, and then also the Meals on Wheels program. Her name is Carrie McKnight. So all meals for the Meals on Wheels program do have to follow certain dietary guidelines that are a little bit different than what our dietary guidelines are for The Neighbors. So the meals might be the same basic meal, but they do have some differing things in them. So that does add extra work for the menu production. So for an example, there has to be a minimum of 675 calories per meal. They have to have 19 grams of protein. And then there's also specific meals for low sodium and other specific diets, like low sugars and low fats as well. Also in the requirements is there also has to reach certain levels of vitamins and minerals, and there's focuses on different vitamins and minerals that have to be on there. That is not something specific that The Neighbors has for residents. It's more of a focus on well-balanced meals versus specific vitamins and minerals, as well as ours look at the full-day meals. So we provide one meal per day for Meals on Wheels. So they have to make sure all of the nutrients are in that specific meal, versus at The Neighbors, we have three meals per day, so those nutrients can be spread out. So they are slightly different. Carrie also provides nutritional counseling in partnership with the ADRC. So that can be by request for specific individuals, but then also quarterly at some of the meal So preparation of the food, so this is what the staff at The Neighbors do with the food for the Meals on Wheels program. So the meals are prepared at The Neighbors in our main kitchen, so in our central building, right where our food is made for our residents as well. They're prepared every day in the morning, and then they're typical, the menu, similar to The Neighbors, of what we're having for lunch. So at The Neighbors, breakfast is made to order for all residents in the households, and then lunch and dinner are served out of the main kitchen. So typically, the Meals on Wheels meal is what we're having for lunch. There is some exceptions to that. We don't typically send liver and onions for the Meals on Wheels program. So when that's on our menu, we make something different, or some other specific nursing home things that are requested at The Neighbors. Some variations do occur. And then the ADRC staff picks up the food from The Neighbors through our main garage in the central building, and then it's already packaged and ready to go, and then that's brought to the congregate meal sites. So meal costs. So meals are priced, and it's determined by the cost of the food, as well as the cost of some of the overhead costs of The Neighbors. So we actually allocate the amount of energy and space and things like that we use, as well as the labor costs for the staff that are preparing the food for the Meals on Wheels program. So that is all derived into what is considered a meal cost per meal, and then that is done on a yearly contract with the ADRC. So that can change. Every meal is going to go up and down in price, so we do it based on an average per our budget. This program does save the county money compared to the previous contracts, as we are not making a big profit off of this. If we were contracted with, as the county was contracted with a different service provider for the food, it would, they would have overhead costs as well as a profit margin, which we have a very minimal profit margin for it. And then this is evaluated every year, and then a new contract is signed with the ADRC. All right, so that's the senior meals program. If there's any questions about either senior meals, or NDC in general, or the report in your packet, I would be happy to answer them.
Supervisor Steen.
Yes, thank you, Carmen. I was a member of the ADRC, and we used to contract out for different kitchen services, and it was not only expensive, but it was not very reliable in some cases. So the ADRC, along with The Neighbors, discussed, why don't we have our county people do this? And I think it's been a good example of interdepartmental cooperation, and it's a win-win situation for both people, or both departments. And my wife and I are users of the Meals on Wheels, and the food is good. It looks like I haven't missed many meals, so thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Steen. Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This gives me the opportunity to tell the county board, as being a member of the Neighbors Committee for the last few years, how well I feel it's run, the professionalism that Carmen shows, and care for their residents. The people in finance have the numbers right there. HR gives great reports. We know how many people are in the facilities, and what it would take to fill it up and more. And I think every once in a while, they may give us a scare on not doing so well financially, but the potential is there, and the need is definitely there, and the care is utmost as far as anybody that I've ever talked to. So kudos to The Neighbors.
Thank you, Supervisor Bjork. And as a former member of The Neighbors Committee myself, I will certainly second that. Supervisor Thomas.
Mr. Chair, just a simple question, curious. So when meals are canceled, or like for the snow day, or whatever, hopefully nobody's going hungry, right? Or how does that work?
So I hope that no one goes hungry. Unfortunately, I'm not sure how that would work. It would depend on the individual. So when that happens, there is notices that goes out, both to us and then to the individuals that have those meals. So the congregate meal sites are closed on those days, so then we wouldn't provide those meals. So hopefully people aren't going hungry, and that we don't have too many days in a row.
Yeah, no, I certainly, my question was not intending to make anybody feel bad or anything, or point a finger. It was just, I was just curious, you know, so if there's, you know, if there was another program that you like would subcontract to that helped in that situation or something, but just curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that works. That might be a better question for the ADRC individuals that deliver, if there is another program, because we're just called up and told that we don't have to make the meals that day. Because we still operate when there's snow days, as our residents are still there, so we wouldn't have any problem making the food, but I think it's more the delivery systems.
Thanks. Thank you, Supervisor Thomas. Anyone else? I think you are done.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Carmen. All right, that concludes reports of departments. Onto consideration of reports, resolutions, and ordinances to the county board from the executive committee. Item A, resolution authorizing borrowing not to exceed $3 million and providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation promissory notes. I will need a motion second to get this on the floor. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Steen seconds. All right, before I open the floor, I had a very valuable conversation with Supervisor Wilsey on this topic, and I realized that I was remiss at our last county board meeting, so I apologize for that. We brought in the debt structuring, in part, to explain a sort of a debt smoothing. We do have the money in the general fund to afford what we need for the highway for this year. We could spend it that way. And a number of people have said, so why are we borrowing? And the biggest answer to that is, we would like to present the citizens of Dunn County with a relatively stable tax bill. As Dustin mentioned, we have a 52-year pavement cycle right now, which is an enormous hole that the county board, past county boards have dug. I do not excuse myself from that, but we have not been funding the highways to the degree that they need to be funded, and we need to dig ourselves out of that hole. So we are very likely to need to borrow for highway in 2025 as well. And more to the point, in 2026, we are probably going to have to expand the highway shop to get those $300,000 trucks out of the snow and the hail. That's about a $5 million expense. As I was not particularly happy with ending up with the highway deficit that we have at the moment, I wanted to look into the borrowing and a smooth borrowing pattern, so that we don't in fact drop the mill rate this year, and then bring it up again next year, and then spike it the year after. A smooth process. If we use the money in the general fund now, we will not have it available when the much larger expense comes due for 2026. Now, I very much hope that that is a different county board chair's problem, but as someone who inherited a number of problems, I would like to leave a smaller number for my eventual successor. So I apologize for not putting that framing in with the discussion on structuring of debt. And with that, I open the floor. Supervisor Morehouse.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we consider this, I would just like to remind my colleagues on the board of the audit presentation that we heard in September, which described us with strong operating results, mentioned our pretty substantial payoff of debt in 2022, and what kind of a favorable position we are in with reference to the amount of money which we have borrowed, and the amount of money that could conceivably be borrowed. We've, I think, handled this pretty responsibly. So as you think about this, do think about the fact that the county is in a very strong operating position, and it would be nice for us to continue to do that. And as Chairman McCullough has pointed out, to smooth the tax rolls for our constituents, to not have to borrow lots, and then borrow little, and borrow a lot, and borrow little. So I just would like you to think about the strength of the county budget over the past several years. Thank you.
I should make one further note. When we did this last year, we authorized up to $1 million in borrowing, and I suggested that we probably would not need to spend that money. And in fact, we have not, we do not need to. If we authorize $3 million this year, I'm pretty sure we're going to need to spend it. Any further? Supervisor Headland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, this obviously came out of the committee, executive committee. We kicked a lot of numbers around, we always do. And when it comes to coming to a consensus and an agreed-upon resolution, most of the numbers you see in front of you, including the $3 million of borrowing, was suggested by me. And the reason is just the reasons you've already heard, is that we cannot just go out there and wave a magic wand and say, okay, here, you know, we can, we'll raise the tax levy this amount, and the next year this amount, and the next year, and we'd have a balanced budget. And that would be the only way that we could operate and continue to operate, because we have an increased budget every year. You know, I guess maybe we should have had a 10-year chart from Kelly, or myself, or somebody, showing that every year, the 10 years, or I guess they're so that, dozen years that I've served on this committee, the budget started out at about $70 million back in 2010, and it's now over 90. And it's not going down. I mean, unless you have some magic, magic beans that we can grow, or something. So this was a plan to not bury the county in debt, but in fact, to borrow responsibly at a rate less than we pay it back. Less than we pay it back. I think people do that. I think people buy a car, and you run that car, and you hope it lasts long enough so that the next car that you maybe trade in, or whatever you do, you can replace and afford to make the payments until, again, the next car. You borrow against your home, so that you can remodel, or add on, or whatever it is you do. So we do this in our own lives every day, every day, unless you are, you know, really good, and you can just work out of the cash out of your billfold. So, you know, this isn't anything new. I don't want to make it sound like it's the only way we can go. It's not. But I, in my mind, it's a responsible way to go, that offers future county boards a chance to bring in balanced budgets, and yet achieve the things that we know down the road we need to achieve, and that's shorten the lifespan of repairing our roads, and also looking forward to the fact we must build a new highway shop. And, you know, we can wait until we just have to, I guess, but then we'll probably see, you know, 20 new board members or something, when you, when you ask for 10 or 20 million. So that's my spiel. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Sean Breslin, did you have a question or a comment?
Mr. Chair, my only comment would be, do we know what the current interest rates are versus what we're getting in the general fund? So is there a payoff that way?
Chris?
When, when we looked at the borrowing, when the gentleman from our bond advisor spoke to us last month, so right now we're running at about 5%-ish, some, some a little bit more, some a little bit less, 5%-ish on our long-term investments in savings, and he, he said he thought that it was a realistic number for us to look at 4% in borrowing.
That's, yeah, quite significant then. And to speak to Supervisor Headland's point about paying more than we are borrowing, the current plan calls for continuing to pay down about $5 million a year, and if we adopt this, borrow about $3 million a year. So retiring at least $1 or $2 million of debt overall in any given year, and bringing the number down slowly over time. Supervisor Steen.
Yes, County Manager Corporal, on all of our borrowing and our investing, our financial committee looks at what would be more advantageous for us. And in history, we have refinanced to get a better interest rate on loans that we've made in the past. Is that correct?
That is correct. Most, these bonds would be 10 years, and if two or three or five years from now, there's a financial advantage to refinancing, just like you might on a mortgage, we would pursue that as well. Permission to do that.
Any further speaking? Does not look like it. I guess we go to a vote. This is, of course, oh, Supervisor Wilsey, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask, is this a roll call vote?
This is a roll call vote. And it's a three-quarters majority required, which is 22 votes. And people who are not here count as they know.
If you tap your screen on your microphone, you'll be able to vote.
If you tap your screen on your microphone, you'll be able to vote.
It's a tough call.
And then, well, that is in process. Supervisor Pat Breslin, how would you vote? Do we still have Supervisor Pat Breslin online? Okay. Well, maybe circle back. Supervisor Quinn.
Yeah, yes.
Supervisor Quinn votes yes. Supervisor Robinson.
Yes.
Supervisor Robinson votes yes. So that would give us 23 votes. Supervisor Pat Breslin, are you still with us? Like a seance. Last call, Supervisor Pat Breslin.
Okay, that's a no.
That would be listed as no. And we have 23 votes, which means that the borrowing for $3 million passes.
Thank you all. It's a tough decision, and I think we have handled it in the best interests of Dunn County. Item B, resolution adopting the FY 2024 budget. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Calabria, oh, Supervisor, actually Supervisor Sean Breslin seconds. He beat you off the draw just a tiny bit, Supervisor Calabria. Any discussion on the budget? Seeing none, I believe this is a... Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, I got the wrong screen showing. Supervisor Larry Bjork, my apologies.
This is the, but this is, has to do with what the executive committee did, yes or no, as far as new positions?
Yes, this does include several new positions. I'm not sure of the exact number.
Okay. Well, I think the exact number is four. And one is for the Sheriff's Department. And three are for Human Services, unless I'm wrong.
I believe two for Human Services and then one and a half, and then several partial positions. One in admin, one in Veteran Services.
first of all, it seems like it's a heavy load just for the executive committee to decide what to put forward to the rest of the board as far as who should be hired or not hired. I guess I have to speak for people that are a lot like the Highway Department. I think there's a lot of people in Dunn County that also are seeing an increases of 40% or greater in their fuel purchases, whether it's blacktop or whether it's gasoline or diesel fuel or home eating oil. You know, it's a minimum of 40% increase. I think we need to speak to the people that don't have the money because of increases in food prices to feed their families. And, you know, we saw it at last CR and team meeting today that stepping stones is, is seeing an increase in demand for food. Even provided pop-up pantries, Ridgeland, Elk Mound, and other where's around the country, that people are hurting. And people don't have the dollars that they had a year ago, whether they were on a government program that just reduced their, their payment from like $600 and some dollars down to just over $200 and some dollars. They don't have those dollars in their pocket anymore. And, you know, I haven't been down to the Sheriff's Department and the jail since I was in college. And I was working, by the way, I wasn't in there. But I did have classmates that were in there and they spit on the floor and it just, it makes me mad to this day. Lester, what the heck are you doing spitting on the floor? Just lay down and be quiet. Well, I had the opportunity to do that. And I know it isn't the same as it is now. But that's the only one I can speak to. Because if the people that we had hired to do the job can't do the job, it really kind of bugs me that we have to hire a supervisor to keep an eye on them. Now, the chairman, you know, makes a good point that, well, you know, it might save us a lawsuit and maybe $90,000 a year is a cheap insurance policy. Well, for people that don't have food or what they need to live, whether they're big-time, expensive, high-rolling farmer like myself or if you are having to scrape by on as cheap a housing as you can and hope that you got enough money for the rent when a box of cereal that's used to feed your kids, you know, has doubled in price, it's a bad deal. So every one of those new positions, I, I'm not going to argue that the people that are being upgraded in their positions shouldn't get the money because I do think Dunn County should be, should pay good people a good wage. But I don't like adding positions, even though they might be all needed, when so many people, I think, are suffering. And I just wish that wasn't the case. And I wish I could support a resolution that says we're not going to hire any more FTEs. We'll, we'll, we'll fill out the positions that we do have and make the changes so that can, people can get their work done because apparently, you know, well, let's see. Budget positions request summary. DOA Finance, DOA Finance, Existing Staff. Well, sure, it's only $9,000 for each position, but how come they can't do their job? Thank you, Chris, for saying that we're not going to hire an assistant for $141,000. Human Services, Engagement and Development. That's $113,000. Human Services, a program lead. That's $114,000. Licensed therapist. I'm sure you can get your therapy without having to have somebody on staff. It's $104,000. Jail sergeant, $110,000. And I just, it burns my mouth to say that I wish they didn't have to spend money on staff at the highway and that we could just have another load or two of blacktop. Because we were told tonight that $140,000 will give us a road of, give us a mile of blacktop with a 10% increase. So, you know, I know, I know I don't stand a chance with this. But every dollar you spend on FTEs is a dollar that can't be spent someplace else. And thank you for your patience, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Bjork. Any other speaking? Supervisor Hagan.
Thank you. I appreciate the work for everyone who made this budget possible. One of the things that comes to my mind is, I think it was back in September, when we had the data about the amount of revenue coming in from the state and how over the past 10 years is like dropped off a cliff. In the meantime, over that same 10-year period, on the federal level, we've had mandates issued that are unpaid for as well. So we have state and federal mandates coming down that have not been paid for and will probably not be paid for in the future either. And so for right now, as I see, we as a county are basically on our own for these fundings. That 10 years ago, when those budgets were made, they had that money. So the money that is not coming from the state, we have to find out some way of providing for these services. And as we've seen over the past 10 years, there has not been any significant, like, increase of services above what is actually needed from all the budget programs that we've seen. All these services are needed for the county. So I just want to appreciate everyone who made this budget possible.
Thank you, Supervisor Hagan. And I will note that our staff are absolutely doing the jobs they're paid for. And I cannot stress that enough, that the people we are talking about giving raises to are doing work commensurate with those raises. Supervisor Steen.
Yes, I'd like to request a roll call vote, please.
I think for budget, we have to have one anyway, so.
It's not necessary, but once it's requested.
So this will be a roll call vote. Any further speaking? This is a simple majority vote. All in favor? Well, hit your button.
While the supervisors are voting, those of us joining online. Supervisor Quinn.
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn votes yes. Supervisor Robinson.
Yes.
Supervisor Robinson votes yes. And Supervisor Breslin? Pat Breslin?
No.
Sorry, Supervisor Breslin, you broke up there. Can you say that other part again?
The first vote was a yes, this vote, no.
First vote was a yes, second, this vote is a no. All right, we will get that logged. Thank you, Supervisor Breslin.
Well, that clearly passes. Item C, resolution adopting the FY 2024 budget, budget levy, sorry. I presume someone wants this. Oh, there we go, there's the motion. Supervisor Steen. Supervisor Vandermeel in seconds. Levy, I believe, is roll call? Oh, all right. Does anyone want to make it a roll call? Supervisor Steen, you'd like it to be a roll call vote? All right. Roll call it is.
All right, give me one second.
Any further speaking to the levy? Seeing none? Cast your votes.
Supervisor Robinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Robinson votes yes. Supervisor Pat Breslin?
No.
Supervisor Pat Breslin votes no.
I'm sorry, yes.
Supervisor Quinn votes yes.
Motion passes. 11D, 2023 Budget Adjustments, Department of Human Services and County Clerk. This is the usual, grants come in, grants go out. We have to make the books balance. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Lee now seconds. Any speaking to the motion? All right, this is a budget adjustment, so this one is a roll call.
And two-thirds.
And two-thirds.
Okay. I'm glad I was so prepared. All right. Supervisor Pat Breslin?
Yes.
Supervisor Pat Breslin votes yes. Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn votes yes. Supervisor Robinson?
Yes.
Supervisor Robinson votes yes.
Motion passes. Onto item 12, consideration of reports, resolutions, and ordinances coming to the county board from the standing committees. Committee on Administration, item one, resolution canceling checks over two years old. I think that one's pretty obvious. If anyone has questions, we can arrange that. But I need a motion and second. Supervisor Zons and Supervisor Bauer. Any speaking to the motion? All right, all in favor? Okay, I'm just making sure we catch all the online ones. Anyone, any opposition? Motion passes. Resolution adopting the 2024 wages. I'll need a motion and a second. Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Sean Breslin, speaking to the motion. Supervisor Headland, or do you want to bring up Jenna, or?
Are there any questions?
I guess that's really the fundamental one. It is pretty self-explanatory.
Are there any questions on the pay grid? Basically is what we're talking about, increasing the pay grid. Center of the grid, 2% along with steps were applicable.
It does not look like we have any questions. All right, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution three, amending the inventory of job classification, adding highway engineering technician and talent development coordinator. I need a motion and a second. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Lee now seconds. Any discussion of the motion? Supervisor Prochnow is probably the person to speak to this. If, 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 if we need someone, it's again, pretty self-explanatory, or Dustin. Just making sure you're awake out there. Seeing no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 12A4, ordinance amendment to 7.06.06 Code of Ordinances, Marriage License Fees. Second reading, the motion in the second, we're last time around, so the motion is on the floor. I believe the county clerk explained it pretty well last time around. Are there any further questions on the motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. That takes us to item 13, announcements. Our next regular county board meeting will be January 17th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. I believe the clerk wants to speak to you about whether or not you're running for a board supervisor again.
Yes. In the large amount of papers that you were presented with tonight, there is the notice about the elections, yes. You can start circulating papers, nomination papers, on December 1st if you are running for reelection or if you are interested in running for county board. If you are intending not to run, we need you to file your notification of non-candidacy with my office. Those dates are on there as well. All paperwork must be turned in by January 2nd at 5:00 PM in my office. If you do not have all your paperwork turned in by that time, you will not appear on the ballot. We will have candidate packets ready for all of you, starting tomorrow, if you wish. But you can certainly come in at any point in time and take out a packet. All the information will also be listed online. You also were provided a calendar from the Wisconsin Counties Association in conjunction with Discover Wisconsin. They wanted you all to have one of those. I don't, I don't think that this year they had anything featured from Dunn County, but perhaps Supervisor Zons can provide some photos for them for next year. You all are also invited to the Second Annual Jingle and Mingle. It will be on Tuesday, December 19th, in this room at 3:30 till 4:30, and then at Cancun from 4:30 until, well, if the sheriff's coming for a while. So you're all invited for that, to join with some senior management. I think that's it.
All right.
Wait, I'm sorry, I have one more. Per diems, please turn in, if this was your last, you should all have more committee meetings, but please turn your per diems in by the end of the year, especially if you have not turned in a per diem yet for the entire year. It would be helpful to have that. I won't, won't say who. But please turn your per diems in, and if you need some, there are blank per diems on the desk by the door.
Okay, and I will note, in particularly, if you are planning on not running, filing for non-candidacy sooner rather than later allows people who might want to run for the seat a little bit more time to make that decision. So I hope to see you all back here next year. I hope to be back here myself. All right, County Manager Corporal. And I got one from Steen here, too.
I just wanted to note that Dustin Binder informed me that he and his family will be featured on Channel 13 tonight. He has some sons who have some health challenges, and they're going to do a piece on their, on their, I think, I believe, on their diagnosis and the path that his family is on. So you want to catch that, 10 o'clock tonight?
Thank you, County Manager. Vice Chair Steen.
Yes, Andrew, did everybody get a chance to sign that? Thank you.
So Supervisor Hartong, do you have the sheet? Yes, it looks like it.
I think everybody but me at this point. So with that, we are adjourned.